Okay, we are recording. It's Saturday, July 20th. This is 11:07. This is a special select board meeting. And it's immediately following that special town meeting to elect two new members. I'll open the meeting by welcoming Josh Tracy and Mike Gould. Along with myself as the new selectman. Employees present, this is Michelle, our clerk. And public present is Toby, Cynthia, Paul, and Matt, our fire chief. I'd like to move to do the, have everybody stand and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one on our agenda is to elect the chair of the board of assessors. We'll need a motion to discuss if somebody wants to make a motion.
Make the motion.
Second. Okay, we need to elect a chair to basically moderate the meetings between the three of us. If we can't decide it, then Michelle has to do a drawing of straws.
Want to make an nomination?
You wanna, you wanna make a, you wanna make a motion to vote on it?
Yes. Second.
Okay. So, Josh Tracy. Show of hands for chair.
Who are we voting on?
Josh Tracy for chair.
Josh Tracy for chair, okay.
Okay, no votes. Mike Gould for chair would be, we'd have to do a, a-
Need another motion, a second.
A motion.
Second.
And a second. To vote for Mike Gould for chair.
So no vote?
No vote.
Okay.
Make a motion for Jeff Peters for chair.
Second.
And a vote.
For Jeff Peters.
Three for Jeff.
We have a chair of our board, lucky me. As I go down through this, I'll just remind everybody that we, we are a new board. We're a green board and please be patient with us. We will get through all of it. Item number two is open session. This is open to the public for comments. We normally limit it to two minutes per chair. Is there any open discussion? Toby Hall.
Positive comment, I like the fact that you have upcoming work sessions. Some of them real soon, some of them I think next week, and then there's a couple way out in September. If you can make it, I, first thing I think of town should fund your transportation and whatever the costs are in getting to these workshops. That I encourage you to attend.
He's referring to your second page. That's right, he is what he's talking about.
And most of these are webinars, so you'd be, you'd be participating online.
My just the other comment is, I'm hoping that somewhere in the future we can get back to discussing what we're going to do with that town hall.
Yes. So we have a stack about this tall and basically the Hot Topic pile. And in that pile, that's, that's very high on the list.
That's understandable and I think, I think we're all going to be patient. I mean, even if it goes, you know, well into the middle of the year or four, we get to that.
And just a note, we have, that has been work done on that and it is in process. Just, just so you know, it's just not sitting stale in a pile. Anybody else? So we can move on from that. Item number three, discussion of dates and times for meetings. I make a motion that we open discussion to schedule our meetings.
Second.
Myself, I've talked to a bunch of people from the town. They're very disappointed with the current meeting time of four o'clock. I too am because I run a business and it's very hard for, for me to attend. And I think transparency wise, the more people that can attend our meetings, the less likely we are to have problems. I've come up with my suggestion, I'll present it to you too. This is the group that it matters to. I'm suggesting first and third Wednesday at 6:00 PM for our regularly scheduled selectmen's meetings. This is discussion, so looking for input.
I like that idea.
I support it.
Guess we may need to vote.
Yep, so I make, I make a motion that we vote on first and third Wednesday at 6:00 PM for our regularly scheduled meetings.
Second.
Let's vote. Wednesdays, first and third of each month at 6:00 PM will be the scheduled selectmen's meetings.
Are we going to continue to be at the fire station?
I don't think we have any choice.
Just throwing it out there, just make sure that we-
So let's, let's add that.
At the fire station?
At the fire station.
Okay.
The other thing I'd like to add into this before we move on. We have a bunch of special selectmen's meetings coming. We have a pile of stuff to get through. I would like to, whenever possible, use the opposing Wednesdays at six o'clock to conduct those meetings, just so that we can all be there and the, and the public will be able to be there. And we all realize there's things that come up that can't be done in that time, that they need to be done sooner than that. But I'd like to strive to do any specials on the opposing Wednesdays at six o'clock.
That will also give them time to come up with questions from meeting to the next Wednesday if they have go over the information, they have questions, that will give them a chance.
These scattered in the middle of the day and whenever, I just, I'd like to move away from that and be more structured about it. So, we'll make a motion that that's what we'll do with our special meetings. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
And a vote, let's vote on that. Three. So special selectmen's meetings will be held on opposing Wednesdays when we don't have our regularly scheduled meetings. Unless it warrants immediate action.
Well, until you guys get your feet under you, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to be the schedule forever. It's just till you guys get some of your-
That's right.
Your footing.
We just got a pile of things to get through and-
We do.
You're not going to do it two Wednesdays a month for a while. Okay, moving on. I make a motion, item four. Sign the commitment books for 2024 taxation. I make a motion that, we bring this to discussion. We have a, we have an issue with our tax collection, our tax commitment book. Our previous selectman left without signing the book. And we've had to stop tax collection until we have a signed commitment book. And that's what this is about for us as selectmen. You guys are coming in new, signing commitment into what we've got for a commitment book and know that going in. I'd like to make a motion that we sign the book.
Second.
And we're going to take it to a vote, we all vote to sign the commitment book. Let's do that right now and have it done.
Do you all, do you have a pen?
No, I might've lost mine.
Okay. Look at, there's two sets of book, there's two books. One is what they call the valuation book that is kept forever and you're safe. The commitment book stays in our office. That's what we use to record payments and things in the book. Any place you see a yellow sticky requires three signatures. So I know Jeff has signed in many, in all the spots. So it's just you, Mike, and you, Josh, to sign the other spots, so. And they're identical, they're, but the, the purpose is different, so. Along with that book comes this form here that has to be sent to the state of Maine. This also requires a board signature. Nobody has signed this one yet. This is where you report to the state what you have for evaluation of veterans exemptions, homestead exemptions, and this is where they get the information to send us back our reimbursements.
Good question.
What's that?
We're committing to the town manager Jeff Libby who has also resigned. Once we have a town manager, or-
That's a good question.
Good question, Josh.
Well, and he was interim at the time of commitment.
I would think it'd be all right because your name's in there too, so you should be a book collector.
And I am tax collector, under my, my title is tax collector.
Okay.
So this is taken right off the sheet that I got from you. That's me, that's Josh.
Somebody hasn't signed.
Okay.
Did I miss one?
What, did you miss one?
I must've missed one, I just caught it. You need to verify those.
I'm sitting there watching. And you can ask me for copies. If we do something today that maybe you don't understand and you want to read a study more, just let me know because like that form, I can copy it for you so you can look it over and understand what it is that we do.
Okay.
It's pretty helpful. She, she made a copy of the budget for me and then when you look at this, you've already kind of seen it.
Yeah. Awesome, let's move on and then I just look at it when you guys are talking.
So moving on, item five, discuss the recommitment of taxes for 2024. Make a motion to move it to the floor for discussion.
Okay, so what happens is you have your books that you just signed as commitment and it was committed under Jeff Libby. Now, because he is gone, they do a recommitment. So if you had a new town manager, you would recommit to that town manager. Or you can recommit to me, the treasurer, to do that. And it's their job, they're responsible for the amount of money that is supposed to be collected. Is basically what the form is telling you. So it depends on, you know, what your future plans are, when do we recommit, who do we recommit to, is the questions that you as a board need to answer.
We need a recommitment to continue to collect, to collect tax right now.
Right. I mean, you have now the commitment is, so we're now fully functioning there. But yes, you should do a recommitment to another person when Jeff is gone.
And the recommitment to that person, that person is signing responsibility to oversee it.
Yep, and then there's also a settlement form and I have to match what we have collected to what the time, until the time of Jeff's leaving. Make sure the two figures match. What I'm recommitting versus what he's collecting.
Any questions from either one of you? I make a motion that we sign the recommitment over to Michelle.
Second.
Let's vote.
Okay, so I'll do that recommitment form up and I'll have it ready for another meeting or that you can stop in on Monday. As long as I have two signatures, I'm good to go, there's a quorum, so.
And that vote was three for recommitment to Michelle. Moving on, item six, signing abatement forms. I'd like to make a motion to move it to the floor to discuss. And then, second. Michelle, this one is, would like some explanation from you.
Sure. We have, as you know, gone through a revaluation. People have the option to appeal to the assessor and say, my house, you know, has gone up way too much, I don't think I can sell it for that. I want you to, and they discuss it with the assessing agent, which is Hamlin Associates. Upon their discussion, Josh can issue a abatement, which is taking off money of what was billed. And that's how you get rid of some of the extra money, like not charge the taxpayer so much. Is an abatement. These people have been granted the abatement, but the board actually has to, because you're the assessors, have to agree with Josh that it should be lowered. I know that on Friday we had two more that have appealed to Josh for a decision. I'm waiting back, I'm waiting here from them.
And to be clear, Josh Moran of Hamlin Associates.
Yes, sorry, thank you. These, these have been addressed and they just need your approval.
He did our original assessment, correct?
Yes. So Josh Moran has, has looked at each one of these and feels they're in line?
Yes, yep. So he is going to take off the amount of money that you see listed off their tax bill.
Okay.
And the taxpayer will own the balance.
Now, this money that we're taking out for abatements comes out of our overlay.
Yes.
And have we done calculations where we're at with our overlay?
Right now you only have $669 in abatements that have been issued.
Okay.
And you have $32,000 something that's allotted for abatements.
Abatements and 2% discount?
No, the 2% is under the $22,000, so it's kind of separate from the two, yep.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we sign the abatement forms.
Second.
Vote.
There's not more.
Vote. All three of us agree, we'll sign the abatement forms. Is there, is there an end to these coming in?
They have 185 days, which puts you December to be able to file for an abatement and be heard. There's also, the person could actually go back and all the assessor has made an error. They missed my garage, most people won't do this, but, and then that's when a supplemental tax bill comes into play.
This must be just a mailing address for a piece of property that's owned in town?
Yeah.
Okay. So this person has two properties, Michelle, or?
Who is it? Did it come back? Did it print out twice? In some cases-
It's the same amount.
Lot 2553, lot 3, 21-0, yeah, it's the same one.
Okay, so don't sign the second one, just go ahead and I'll take that and get rid of it. Sometimes they print twice for something and there's the last one.
You won't keep them in two separate batches?
Nope, they can all be combined, that's fine.
This town of Karna, is that a gravel pit or something?
I think so. I don't know where the location is.
Forty-seven acres, it must-
It's a brown, well, what always was called Brown Pit, but I don't, I think it's, I can't remember the name of it now, they ain't even assigned there anymore.
Mitchell Road to Gravel Pit. So this-
I didn't think they paid tax on that, being a municipality. They do?
They have a deal with that.
Yeah.
Me either, that surprised me too. Because usually municipalities are, maybe it's a tight, maybe? They make money on it, so maybe that makes a difference.
The Dale and Danielle gray, this must be their house.
There was an abatement on one side and I'm waiting for the supplemental. I don't think you've seen the supplemental yet, but they had confused a couple issues.
Because the camp is being torn down and rebuilt, right?
Right, I don't think that started yet, I'm not sure.
It was still standing yesterday when I went by.
Oh, okay.
So this must be for the house.
What's the address?
It just says Map &amp; Law.
Oh, okay, does it use physical information?
It's 413 Silver's Mills Road, but that's probably just their mailing address.
Yeah, it would be easier if we had, if there was an address to that lot number, you know.
That is hard not knowing which parcel it is without looking them up.
I'll try to remember to put that information on before I, when the next batch I bring to the board.
It's just handy, like, you know, like with Dale and Danielle, they own two properties and it's not knowing which property we're talking about.
Exactly.
So is he staying in this property?
I believe this is the house. There'd be no reason to abate the camp because it's being demolished.
Right. And it's as of whatever is standing on April 1st, that's the year, that's the tax year that the state-
That's how they figure it?
Yep, they figure April 1st is the beginning date for assessing. Yep, just throw it right down the pile, thank you.
Okay, that's all of them?
That's all the abatements, yep.
For now?
For now.
Okay, moving on. Item seven, to review treasurer warrants. The first batch, our payroll warrants, 40, 41, 43, 44, 45, and 46.
That's that pile.
I make a motion, we review the warrants and sign them.
Second.
And vote.
Everything at this point is still showing Joanne and Dale on the system. I couldn't do it because I didn't know who was going to win today, so I've crossed out those names and made you your own lines underneath.
Okay. So these payroll warrants are going back three weeks?
They are. The way this board has always done it is that we do the payroll, we save the warrant, we put it in a plastic binder, when town, when your board meeting happens, then we get the signatures. I'm not really sure that that is the right way to do this. I have always had the warrant, two board members stop in, get the quorum, because I need authority from the board to send out checks. So all of these have been processed, but they're sitting in envelopes in the office until I get signatures for an okay to sign and send these bills on. So yes-
Is there, is there a change or proposal in the way we do it in this, or you, that's just how?
That would be up to the board. I mean, whatever the board wants to do, if you want to see them every week, if you, you know, and so you learn what's going on or what's, or do you want to stay with just having me bring them to your meetings?
Yeah, biweekly.
Biweekly.
I like the idea of everything personally, I like the idea of everything being done at a scheduled meeting. And anybody that wants to show up and, and be part of it or witness it is welcome. I just don't, I'd like to move away from little spotty meetings here and there and I'd like to have it, and again, this is me talking, I'd like to have it structured so that- I'd like to have it structured so that people know what's happening.
Right, so that brings us to the, the situation that the town employees have been put into of a board disappearing on them and not having authority to issue any bills to anybody. I've had to call the state offices, I've had to call, you know, any place that we owed money, our insurance companies, all of these offices and said, look, we're in a position that we can't send any checks out to you. Um, I did find through MMA, there is a policy that the board can enact that would allow one signature from a board member to move forward with payroll and the AP warrants. Um, I can write that up, I've got the, just the draft. Um, but I can write it up and, and present it at the next meeting.
And you can present it with the legal that backs it?
Yep.
In our situation that just happened, I think that's worth looking at. Do you, you guys agree?
Yep.
I do. The other thing is, are we signing these for back pay? I know right now we're signing them for back pay, but on the normal, are we signing them for back? Or are we signing them for that week, or are we signing them?
Forward.
You're signing them back. So your next meeting technically would have been July third when they walked out, um, or gave their resignations. Um, I didn't have signatures. Those warrants had been issued, paychecks had been issued, and then I didn't have a board to sign. So yes, you do have some issues here that were issued back in June that didn't have signatures.
So the question that Josh, I think, is asking is, when we sign these warrants in our bi-monthly meeting, our scheduled selectmen's meeting, we're signing for two weeks behind us. Each time.
So you guys are waiting, are you?
We get our paychecks on Thursday, every week. But yes, you are signing checks that had already been issued.
Okay, that's the reason I, the biggest reason I ask is because some months where we're going, gonna go first and third, it's gonna be a five-week month. Can we go that third week on that? Are we gonna be okay to back sign for?
That is what they have always done in the past.
Is it better to sign for the two weeks forward than the two weeks behind?
I can't make that happen.
From a bookkeeping standpoint and from your position?
For me, this, once I print these, they're all in the system, so as far as bookkeeping, so to speak, it's all there. I can switch it around if you want to, so that I can do the paychecks that you're, we're going to be paid for. I can make them ahead, yes, I can do that.
I think if we have interruptions in our meetings, or we have vacation schedule problems, or it almost makes more sense to be ahead than behind.
Yes, okay.
Now, the, the, the only thing there is, is, I don't even know if we can discuss this really, but if the amount changes because of ours-
Good point.
What do we do there? I'm trying, I'm trying the best to make it the best for everybody here, but I just want to make sure we cover our-
And that's, that's very valid.
That would be, or if someone was sick, I mean, vacations would be easy because you're gonna know when that person's gonna be out. But if, if someone is sick, and you've already processed the paycheck, so you can have a warrant.
That makes sense, Josh.
Yeah, I, I-
Yep.
So are, are we salaried?
No, we're hourly.
Nobody's salaried?
Nobody's salaried. There's only two of us.
Other than the town manager?
Yep, he's the only one.
But we don't have one, so yeah.
So that, with that being said, I think-
I don't know which way is the best way to go right now. I, I mean, I feel in a lot of ways that we, we should be going forward with it, but the, the money, knowing the amount might change. And once we sign it, does it have to be that amount?
Yes, it is that amount. So myself, I was a little gun-shod because of what happened. Me by myself, unable to pay our bills, girls without paychecks, that's the reason for visiting this. But I think we can correct that with what you're talking about, the MMA, one board member signature. That being said, we're probably better off to leave it the way it is and pay back two weeks, or more.
Yeah, as long as the board, as long as the board knows, and I mean, everybody has actual timesheets. So we do timesheet sheets that go with the backup.
And that will just appear here?
Yep.
So I move to close discussion.
Second.
Discussion's closed, and, um, I move that we sign the payroll warrants.
Second.
And this one here, this is, the big ones are the AP warrants. These, they were being done, like, every time a bill came in, there was a warrant issued. Well, on these, I can actually build up the bills, and I print them the day before your meeting. So those are sitting in the office, and then once you get your signature for these, those bills are sent out after. So this is a little bit different than the payroll. Oops, I guess I missed a couple.
No. She wrote me down here. I'm just doing what she said. This board no longer exists.
Here, right, yep, that's fine. Yeah, these are the ones, I didn't touch them or make any, any marks, because I believe these are the ones that were prior to. This is back in June.
Should I be putting mine full?
No, that's fine.
So you want to just do the same?
Yeah, you can just sign and, sign under each, each other, whatever you would like to do on those. When I processed all the bills yesterday, which it took me, um, most of the day to process all of this stuff, I think our warrant ended up being a hundred and eighty-one thousand, because we have the school payment, we had, uh, Hamlin Associates, their reevaluation payment. Um, and you'll always see the bills here, but then in the office, we split them apart and put them with the pay stubs and put them by vendor. So if you had a question on a specific vendor, like how much sand have we bought from, or who have we bought sand? We pull the vendor and you can see exactly what's on the bills, they all stay together.
There's not usually this many payroll warrants to sign.
No, not usually.
I figure we got a few months of being busy.
You do, and down further in your packets, um, there's some other information. Um, the Wentworth Engineering is there, so for your information for later, when we get into some of that stuff. All you and the Skoggin Bank, that information is also there. Um, the prior board had spoke to Josh, uh, sorry, John Simcoe and Angie. And we were going to move forward with changing banks, but your information's there, I don't know if you want to schedule another meeting so the rest of, you know, the two new board members can actually talk to them with some questions.
I think that's, I think that's something we need to address sooner than later. And probably we'll try to mix it into one of the next one or two agendas.
Yep.
Is that what you think?
Yep, depends on when you choose your next meeting.
Do we, do we do that as a work session with the selectmen and the bank people? Do we do it in a regular selectmen's meeting?
No, you can do it in a work session, I think work session is good.
And are work sessions recorded for the people to listen to, or are they normally?
I've only had one work session, so I'm really not sure how you want to run that. And I think it also depends on how you, like, whether you're staying with the town manager. Do we want to sign all these bank cards and then turn around and sign bank cards again? So I think there's some discussion in the next view.
I think those two things need to happen.
Fairly soon.
Yes. Okay. The treasurer warrants are signed by all three, moving on to item number eight.
Oh, no. No, 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 did that, two more.
Missed, missed all that, yes.
Three more, is there three there?
So accounts payable warrants, forty-two, forty-seven, forty-eight.
Did forty-eight get in your bundle? That's my question. At the very last minute last night, I realized that I did not have our rent for the town hall.
This is forty-two.
Yep.
Forty-two, forty-seven, and forty-eight.
Forty-eight might be on my desk at work, because he was the very last thing last night, um, and that is our rent. So at this point, leave that one off.
Okay.
And I will get it, I'll get it to you.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're going to sign accounts payable warrants forty-two and forty-seven.
Yes.
Forty-eight, we'll sign at a later time.
So I do have one, I did not know what to do with this. These are the minutes from meeting on June nineteenth. The board would have signed these at their next meeting. These are not signed. So I am not sure if we just make note on the bottom that the board resigned, if we just have just signed, because I believe you were, you were there.
Yes.
And it's not on the agenda, that's, that's a surprise.
Yeah, well, it's, we've got it listed here, signing the la, the minutes of the last board meeting.
Oh, then I jumped away ahead of myself.
All right, accounts payable warrants forty-two and forty-seven have been signed. Forty-eight, we'll sign at a later time. Moving to the item number eight, to sign the minutes of the last board meeting. Two members of the board are new, were not present for that meeting. Unsure of procedure. Uh, Jeff Peters was present, so I'm going to sign the meeting minutes and present them with one signature. Hopefully that's correct.
All right.
Okay, moving on, item number nine. Appoint planning board member. Make a motion to move this to discussion.
Second.
My understanding is, um, the select board's responsibility to appoint members of our planning board. It's been brought to me that, that Bridie Armstrong. Is the member wanting to be appointed? It's also my understanding that the, the planning board wants her to be appointed, so that's, our job is to appoint her.
Is Bridie the only one, or is there a list of others, or she's the only one?
She's the only one, this position has been open for a while.
And she's, she's expressed, expressed interest in filling that position, so it's up to us to appoint her.
But there is more people on the board?
Yes, sir, yep.
How many people are allowed, or is, or is there a number that you use?
As far as your committees go?
Yeah, is there, you know, a total of twelve, you know, or is it, we just have four, or?
My understand, my understanding is that is, um, that's a decision the board can make, is how many appointees to a vote, to each one of the committees. So that's something that we're, as a board, open to talk about. And I think that's something we need to do, we've got, we should, I think as a board, we should visit all of our committees and the appointees.
Currently, I think there might be only four, I think she makes number five.
And most of these, most of these committees have an odd number for voting reasons, correct?
Uh, usually, yep, kind of a tiebreaker.
Is that a normal for the past, past years?
From what I can see, yep. It's kind of whoever really kind of wants to be on it. So I think right now, there might be four, she might be number five, but there's three that I'm familiar with.
So what we've got in front of us is, is the appointment of Bridie Armstrong. Per our discussion, I make a motion, we, we appoint Bridie as planning board member.
Second.
Take a vote. Three votes to appoint Bridie. And we must, place for us to sign.
Yep, those three lines and the, three lines, yep.
Welcome, Bridie. Okay, moving on. Item number ten on the agenda, set a date for a work session. I make a motion to move this to discussion. Work session, um, is this, is this intended to be a comprehensive work session? To just look at all the things we have in front of us?
I think the work session should be that both Mike and Josh need to know, like, what are we facing? What, what issues, what priorities do we have? You know, I think your next priority would be another town meeting, so that you can deal with the finances, that seems to, that's really a hot topic.
Can't get through the town manager thing without it.
Yep, exactly, so, um-
So this is basically an up-to-speed meeting?
Kind of, yeah. Yeah, so that we can have some direction, get their points of view on what they feel is important, um, and basically just bring them up to speed, if they're not already.
Okay.
They're not up to speed.
With the previous theme that we've talked about, um, I don't know, when, when does our next scheduled selectmen meeting come?
So your next one would be August seventh.
August seventh is-
Which is two weeks away.
Okay. So with the theme of trying to keep things consistent so that people have no confusion, I think whenever we can, when we schedule special sessions, it should be on that alternating Wednesday, so it's always Wednesday at six o'clock. That being said, if this work session includes other people, like from the bank, then we're gonna have to look at and meeting their schedule for it too.
Right, true. So then the big question is, we had talked about having, um, August third be our second meeting for finances. You don't have a budget for your parks at all. Um, the town office budget, the general government, your insurance, you're gonna have an insurance bill coming out right, real soon. We need to see if the public will let us go back to the original budget that we had started with at town meeting before it got, got, um, decreased. So in that case, you have one week before we have to post that warrant.
If we're doing on August third.
If you do it on August third. So is the bank, you know, how pri, how prioritized is the bank versus the finances? We have engineers that, um-
On the building?
On the building, that we need to decide, do we want to start them on the building? Do we want to wait? Um, we do have, and that's in your packet.
And there's a dollar amount connected with moving to the next step with the engineers?
That's right.
And that dollar amount needs to be approved by the people, correct?
No, because they voted in town meeting, the board-
So we can take it from reserve to pay that, because we've already voted for that?
As long as- As long as the, the board has to make that decision.
Okay.
The other thing is, we need to discuss the SCOTP Act. When do we wanna go ahead with ordering those? At what timeframe? You know, what your ideas are with that? So, those are some issues that are the top ones. And those can't be decided. I mean, the engineer and the SCOTP Act can be done by the board. The rest of it has to go to town meeting. So, and you have one week before I have to post if I'm gonna do the August third meeting.
So, do you feel this Wednesday night at six o'clock coming?
Do you think that that's gonna be out of time? I would have to post on Friday.
Right.
I don't think that's giving you enough time or them enough time. Maybe meet Monday, maybe, for an hour, hour and a half? To just kind of get, you know, get some direction?
Get the information that we need.
Yep, and then maybe, maybe do another meeting on Wednesday. And formula, formulate, complete the warrant that needs to be posted.
So, selectmen's meetings, the, the, the agenda has to be posted for how many days?
The agenda for the board meeting can be within like twenty-four hours.
Okay.
A town meeting is sev, is seven days.
Right. And how do the work sessions fall into that same twenty-four hours?
I think so, yeah.
I think all three of us have some, I have questions, and I'm sure they do. That we need to work through before we sit in front of the people. And this, the, the August third date, as much as I'd love to have it. We're really trying to cram a lot into a small hole.
We are, absolutely. But I wanted to make sure, this is the timeframes. This is what we're looking at. These are the hot topics. So, it's all up to you. Whatever you want to do, we can make. I'm out on August tenth. I have a special family event going on. But after that, I should be okay.
Do we have the funds to keep paying you guys as of now to get us through the end of August?
Yes, we do.
So, that relieves a little bit.
It does.
And that's my feeling. If, if we was, if we was at a budget shortfall where we're right back to non-functioning government. Then August third would be not soon enough.
Exactly.
My feelings are moving it out a little further. Third weekend of August or something like that.
Okay.
What are your thoughts, Mike?
I'm good with any of it.
Your schedule's pretty free.
I think we could get more town involvement too. I mean, we're in vacation season, so.
True.
Yeah.
And as we get further in, let's see, the seventeenth. I believe the kids go back to school August twenty-eighth. I believe is the timeframe for kids go back to school.
When is the third issue?
Is it the twenty-eighth, twenty-one? So, it'd be the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, you think?
I can tell you that right.
That might be a big conflict with.
That would be a conflict of attendance.
Absolutely. I was very pleased to see as many people that came out today.
Absolutely.
I really didn't expect that many, so I was tickled pink to see everyone showing up. Twenty-second, which is the, the third week. So, that would be, uh, twenty-four would be the weekend. So, we have a choice of the seventeenth and the thirty-first.
So, one of the problems with that too is we've gotta deal with our lack of town manager situation. That's not gonna happen without, without the special town meeting.
Right.
So, has that, has that been started, I take it?
We've received, we've just received applications. And as a previous board, we did one interview. At this point, that interview would be null and void because we have a brand-new board. So, we would have to re-interview and interview anybody else that was on the list.
And July first is when that ad came down, I believe.
Right.
And so, I don't know if you need to re-advertise or if you can just take in the random. We did get two or three applications. Two, I'm, two I'm sure of.
We had two that were local people. And we had some from far away.
Yep.
We need to look at all of them, of course. So, I think, I think we oughta repost.
Okay.
You guys agree? Because if you're gonna interview somebody, you've gotta schedule that interview. They've gotta have a period of time to give a two-week notice from where they are. And we've gotta have a special town meeting to be able to have a budget to pay them. So, putting that all on a time schedule.
But do you really want to wait? I mean, you've waited from February to July first. To get applications. And you've got three people that are local. Do you really want to advertise again? And wait that long?
My only take on that is, I wondered if there was hesitation from people applying to the job because of history. And we've, we've had a complete changing of the guard, which might pull out good candidates. And I just think it would be valid to, to just, even if we posted it for an additional week and, or two and.
Okay, okay.
Is it, is there anything wrong with keeping it open right until we decide? Because what if you have somebody come in last minute that's a great candidate? You know? Or is there a legality issue to that?
I'm not sure about that. But if you guys have already interviewed, and then you have another, it just kind of drags it on. You know what I mean? Just kind of, I think you kind of have to have an end date, don't you, to be able to?
I would think it would make sense to, so that.
I mean, I understand Josh's point. It's a very good point.
Right.
Now, was there an application deadline?
There was, July first.
I think we have to.
I think so too. With all the, with all the new appointing of the board and. I just really think that there's, there's validity in, in our job posting. Knowing that everything Sangerville is different than it was. And I'd like it to get out there, at least for a short period of time, even if there's an end date.
So, it has always been just advertised on MMA website? Do you think putting an ad in the newspaper so that maybe, maybe a person from a different area? A neighboring town would see it? Because not everybody wants, I mean, is able to go to MMA's website.
I think that it would pay to do that. But I also think that we need to make it clear in that advertisement what we're looking for. Basically, a list of qualifications that you must have to apply.
Do you want me to look and see if I can find it on the MMA website and copy it to put in the newspaper? Okay.
What do you guys think?
Yep, they need to, they need to know what they need to know.
That's right.
Or what they're gonna be doing with the qualify.
But we also wanna advertise it per letter of the law so that we don't get into a bind there.
Right.
Okay. You want a two-week ad, three-week?
I think three's too long.
I think, I think two weeks.
I think two should be.
Would be fine, okay. Any special newspaper? I know the, the Eastern Gazette is usually the one that people go with. But I don't know Bangor Daily. I don't know which are. I know probably Bangor Daily's gonna be very expensive.
I, I would think just, this, again, this is my opinion. I really would like to see a local person with local interests. That's, that's just one in my mind. That's one of the criteria that would make a great town manager is having them vested in our community.
Absolutely. Okay. I'll see what I can pull together. And then I'll give it, give all of you a proof before we do anything.
Now, does Sammy have a social media page that it can, that it goes on social media as an advertising? Or does Town of Sangerville?
We do have a Facebook page. Since Patrick was here, we've, we've kind of stayed away from the Facebook page. Because there was a lot of comments that, you know, we just.
Negative stuff.
Negative comments, yes. So, we haven't used that since he left.
Okay.
I, I think we should use it as far as at least getting, you know, we have select board meeting. We have a town meeting. We have something going on down at the park, you know? Just keep it simple.
And even posting a job.
Right, even posting a job.
Okay, something on that line.
That's what I think, you know?
I mean, because everybody uses Facebook, right?
Right. That's where you're gonna get your biggest response, is zero money.
True.
And I don't know if there's a way to, to start using social media again. And kind of look at the, look at the presentation when people click onto it. And just remind them that, you know, this is, this is, we're looking for positive comments. And we're looking to, we're looking to unite the town and move forward in unity. And, you know, please, respect that as you use this platform. Maybe just revamp the, you know, when, when you log into it.
The site and stuff, yep. I'll see what we can do. Sammy's pretty good with that.
That's what I thought. Sammy usually is.
Sammy's the one that does all your minutes. And she's the one that takes care of putting it up and.
And this is a no-cost option.
Yep, absolutely.
Other than her, by the hour time that she puts into it.
Well, and, and she does it really pretty fast. I mean, she's a really pretty good yeller. I'm not.
Yeah? Okay, so back to, back to this item ten, setting the date for the work session. Will we complete the discussion on that, setting that date?
Whatever you'd like to do. I'm available whenever you need me.
What do you guys think?
I'm good for anything.
As long as it's not in the middle of the day, I'm good.
Yeah. Josh and I have the same issue. Mike, not so much. He's enjoying retirement.
Trying to keep it that, I'm trying to keep it that way.
Time-wise, for me, and I think I speak for Josh as well. That six o'clock number, I'm lucky to be out of my business at five o'clock.
Yep.
It's usually five-thirty, quarter, or six. And for me personally, that's convenient. I think in your line of work, it's the same.
Yes, yep.
So, the six o'clock thing works. What day do we wanna do it?
Whatever day you want. I can be available.
And you think this work session should be done this coming week?
I would start them. They've got, to bring themselves up to speed on. You know, I've given them a lot of information and.
And.
You'll also see our finances are in your packets too.
Right. Do you think that you guys can get through reading the material before Wednesday? Just coming up to speed?
Yep.
Is that, is that too early?
And there's a lot of that, that is, those, I copied off your, any of the policies and ordinances that town has. So, except two. There were two that were twenty-eight pages long. I didn't do that for you. But it's on our website. But that's some of that. Wentworth is in there. Some other stuff too, yep.
Do we wanna set, do we wanna set it at six o'clock, which day next week? Do you want the whole, most of the week to read it? Or would you, do you wanna do it Wednesday?
I mean, I, I'm, I'm good with Wednesday. Like, I feel that we need to do it sooner, but we need to have time too, but.
It seems like the Wednesday's probably a, a good set.
Right.
Set, okay.
I really like the idea of it happening on the same day every time.
Right.
When we can.
Less confusion in town and.
People will get in the habit of, it's Wednesday. If I got something to deal with.
Right.
So, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, at six o'clock?
We'll do a work session. And this is basically a bring up to speed. Read, read the, read the piles of stuff we have for topics. Okay. Do we need to vote on, everybody in favor, all three?
And then you have your, there's a packet of information there of the classes that are coming up. The municipal law class is on Tuesday. The office is gonna be closed for Sam and I to take it. I have Jeff. He wanted to take it too. I've got him signed up. Monday, I can get either one of you. And unfortunately, Josh, for you, it's like an holiday class. So, that probably wouldn't be something you'd be able to do. But I can make it work. I've got permission to add both of you. It's a webinar, so you just, whatever your email address is, you can do it from home. You can, whatever you wanna do. I just have to have your emails. They'll send you a link.
So, we just, just emails, we have it now?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. We should get you an email that is separate from your personal email because of town business.
Yep. That's what I've done. I've, I've established a separate email just for this. And it's way better.
I mean, sometimes it's a lot of information.
We tried in the beginning to put it all in the business one, and it doesn't work.
Right.
And you're gonna be getting stuff from me. If I see an application come in, it's gonna be forwarded to you so that you can get it, so.
And it does work really well. I'm, I'm happy that we did it the way we did.
Yep, so.
This, so this class, this, this webinar for the twenty-third. That's something that you, you jump on and you participate. You don't pause it and stop and go do something.
Nope.
You participate. It's like being in the classroom.
In a classroom.
With a screen in front of you.
And you should have already gotten an email. There's two, two emails came the other day on this class.
Yep, I, I, I did three.
Okay. All right. I didn't know if you'd gotten them or not.
I did.
How long does this class last?
I think it's nine to three. It's right on the top of your, yep.
It was nine to three, wasn't it?
Nine to three, I think.
Yeah, this shorter notice, I'm, I would struggle hard with Tuesday.
Yep. No, but then you'll have like the tax one, you probably don't need to go to. The one, the next one that you should attend is number four. And that's understanding the Freedom of Access. That's big, just so that, you know, what information the public can have, what information they, you know, what's protected. That type deal. Other than that.
And all three of us need that because I don't have it yet either.
And again, that's a webinar. So, we can get you.
And that's August twenty-second, so there's plenty of time to be there.
And that one's from four-thirty to six.
So.
That works out pretty well.
Right.
Quite so bad.
So, we didn't read, we didn't read in our, in our recording. We've got four items. They're all classes for selectmen and clerks, our town employees. Municipal law class was the first one. And Sam, Michelle, and Jeff are signed for that one. And are you signing up for that one, Mike?
I can't do it. Well, if it's, at which time on that one?
That one's on, that's a nine to three, I believe.
I can't do that.
Yeah, okay. So, we'll just leave it signed up with Sam, Michelle, and Jeff to do that one.
Okay.
Second one was the main state tax symposium webinar. And that's more pointed towards what Michelle does. I believe.
Yeah, it's exercise taxes, tax liens, that kind of. Real estate taxes and stuff.
Do we need to, do we need to vote to spend the money for you to do that?
I have a budget right now.
You have a budget.
That I haven't spent out of, other than the, the first class.
That is gonna be my question right there too.
Yep, so right now, I do have enough in the budget to do that.
So, we don't need to cover that. Number three was, I have the job what now? It's a flyer. It's, it's a, again, another class. And that's a nine to three-thirty. And nobody's signed up for that at this point?
No, because that is in Augusta.
Okay.
And there, I try to aim for the webinars.
It's a Sunday?
Yeah, it's a crazy.
That's a Sunday. Is it really?
Yeah.
July twenty-fifth?
Oh, July. I think it's a good August.
No, this, no, this is July.
You said August.
No, that would be strange.
Yeah, I would say.
That's a Thursday. Okay, so nobody has signed up for that one. And then the FOAA, the Freedom of Access Act class is something that we all. I don't know that it's an absolute requirement, but it really should be if it's not.
I believe it is.
Yeah. I think we all need to figure out how to do that. That one has a cost of forty dollars for each person that takes the class. And that is August twenty-second from four-thirty to six. So, do you need to sign us up for that?
I do.
So, we need to, we need to decide that we are going.
Now, if we all sat in the same room watching the same screen. Now, if we all sat in the same room watching the same screen.
Still gotta, still, yep.
I, I mean, I'm not, the forty dollars is not a...
No, the reason is because you get certificates as completion, so then if the state requests, you know, you have copies with the state, that's also filed with them to know who has taken the classes.
Yeah. Now that, that class should be taken by you, Sam.
Everybody, yep.
Have you guys had it?
I, Sam has had it, but I think it was a year or two ago. I have had it a long time ago, but I need to refresh it on it too.
So is that something we can do as a group?
Yep.
Okay. So we just sit there as a group? Okay. So they're doing every...
But we still pay the forty dollars each because of the certificate. We can sit in front of one screen as a group and do this webinar?
Sure, yep.
Okay.
I don't know how big of, like, I mean, we have the computer screen at the office. Like, I don't have a screen like that, that we could sit and watch. I don't know how you would be able to, if you could do a laptop to do that, like to...
Well, most of the time you can just take a TV and take it from there.
And plug it in?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not good at it. My kids could probably do it.
All you need, all you need is a fire stick on your TV and you can, you can link it and broadcast it.
Okay, so I think I have to be a TV at the house. I can bring a TV into the office.
Your screen would probably be big enough.
You think that would be?
I think if we just turned your screen around and just set four or five chairs right in front of your desk, I think we could all see it just fine.
Yep, we should be able to do that. Then we can, yeah.
So, we've got Mike Gould, Jeff Peters, Josh Tracy, Michelle, and Sam's recently had it.
Yeah, a year or so. I'll put her in too, just so.
Yep.
Yep.
Now, what about Matt? Have you had FOAA?
Yeah, we could, I mean, considering what he does, it probably would be a good idea. He's out in the public a lot, so...
He's in a position where he's chief over a group of people with a group of information.
Yep.
Are you willing to do that, Matt?
Yep, I'm willing to do whatever you guys want.
So that would be one, two, three, four?
Six of us.
If Sam takes it, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, now what do...
Is it possible a town manager might be involved in that at that point?
August twenty-second, it's a possibility.
I can... Yes, yep. Because when I contacted the girl for the classes for Tuesday, I can get them in, if they were able to go, I could get them in on Tuesday's class by Monday. Right.
Hmm.
And luckily it's out far enough that you have options, so...
Now, again, back to the cost. It's forty dollars per person that takes the class.
Mm-hmm.
You have budget for that?
Yep, we have twelve hundred dollars.
Okay.
That's set in the budget, so that would...
Education?
Yep.
Okay. So that would come out of that budget?
Yep.
Okay. So before we move on, we've got Matt, both girls in the office, and all three selectmen are going to take this class at forty dollars each. And we're gonna do it in the town office. And we can, as we get closer, we can discuss the, putting it up onto a TV screen. We can get through that if, if we decide that's what we ought to do.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that a volunteer I hear in the audience? Okay. We'll move on to item twelve. Item twelve, executive session for personnel discussion. One, M R S A subsection four oh five dash six A. Make a mo- make a motion to move this to the floor for discussion.
Second.
Okay. Anything that's personnel is executive session for obvious reasons. What are we thinking, Michelle, for, for timeframe for that?
Um, usually you just note the time that we go in the session.
So you wanna piggyback this on the end of a selectmen's meeting or a work session and then just go to executive session?
Yep, like today, you're gonna, we're gonna go into executive session. You're gonna note the time.
Yep.
We discuss it, and then we turn the tape recorder back on and we come out of session.
Okay. So I wanna make a motion that, at twelve-twenty-two in this meeting, um, we shut off the tape for an executive session meeting. Let's vote. It's one forty-six, July twentieth. We are now coming out of an executive session meeting. We covered some topics, uh, the new select board doing a walkthrough viewing of the old town hall and the legal ramifications of that. We also have instructed Michelle to investigate the board covering interim town manager duties to see if that is legal or not legal, so we can make a decision moving forward. We have discussed the taking of applications and discussed some of what we've seen for applications for the town manager position. And we have discussed the two percent ex- extension on, the two percent discount extension on property tax and it requiring another special town meeting to enact. That was the topic of our discussion.
We have to do motions and seconds on the votes.
On anything we voted on? Okay. So we made a motion and seconded it for Michelle to do the investigation of the board covering in town, interim town manager. And it was a vote of three for her to do that. The rest of it, I think...
Just update.
Yeah, that, they were just policy stuff. One other note before we adjourn. This, this past week, as a town, we received a gift from Duvaltech that was coordinated by Dale Gray, and we received three up-to-date computers to solve our computer problem in our town office. And as a board, we'd like to just extend a thank you to Duvaltech and to Dale for arranging that. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion, just hold on one second here. We've already determined the next board meeting.
Right.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Second.
Vote. Three for adjourn.